Everyone, welcome to the City of Middletown Planning Board Meeting for the month of October. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that your, in order to talk on your mics, they must be in green. And when they are green, your mic is live. Second of all, we're going to do a little housekeeping for our transcriptionist this evening. Members absent, Planning Board members absent are John Numcheck and Nicole Hewson. And also those present are Mr. Welch, Mr. Atkins, and Mr. Krogan. And we'll go back to our agenda. First on the agenda is the approval.
Mr. Chairman, if you want to just read the reminder, any applicant here for the first time?
Yes, I can do that. I could do it after the meeting, after the minutes, but I'd do it now if you'd like. Just a reminder to everyone here that if you're here for the first time, applicant appearances are considered a preliminary hearing, and the Planning Board may or may not choose to act or vote on those applications tonight. All right. Approval of minutes for September 7th, 2022 minutes. Before we do that, I'm going to need an amendment to those minutes. And the amendment is, on page five of your minutes, this is the resolution for Polycraft Industries, 36 to 60 Industrial Place. I'm going to amend it whereas, actually I have to add, whereas this project has an approval from December 1st, 2021, all stipulations in previous approvals shall apply. Meaning, we have put stipulations within that approval that it will follow to this approval. For example-
Landscaping and hours of operation.
Right. Hours of operation especially, and the landscaping that we wanted for screening in perpetuity must be, go along with this approval also. So, I think we have to do the amendment first.
Yes.
All those, I need a motion to amend. Mr. Madden, second, Mr. Britto. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So, the minutes are so amended, as of now, I need a motion to approve the amended minutes. Mr. Britto, Ms. Witt, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Minutes are in the books. Next on the agenda, Roger Parloli, I hope I got it right today. 33 Mulberry Street.
Mr. Chairman, if we can second call that.
Can we wait till the end of the meeting?
Yeah, just move it down to the end of the agenda.
Absolutely. Moving it down then. Next on the agenda, Adriana Becerra, Bakery and Eating Establishment, 366 North Street. Good evening. Please state your full name for the record.
My name is Maria Sierra. I'm covering for my mom. She has a cold, so it's hard for her to speak.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine. And just tell the board what you'd like to do.
We would like to open a bakery in 366 Main, North Main Street, sorry. It's just a small bakery. There's no going to be no seats or tables at the moment. It's just going to be like an In-N-Out fast food restaurant. It's just mostly bread and Colombian treats, nothing to sit down at the moment, and coffee.
Okay, thank you.
What are your hours of operation?
At the moment, it's going to be open from-
Okay. First of all, let's open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Okay. Ms. Tu, anyone on the telephone? Any written comments? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, and I'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns.
Your hours of operation?
So, it would be open from about 5:00 in the morning until 6:00 p.m.?
5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Yep.
What days?
Monday through Sunday.
Every day?
Every day, yeah.
Yeah, daily. Okay, that is different from the application. The application did have 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. originally.
Oh, yes. We left it open as of those time ranges, but at the moment, we're thinking just from 6:00 to 6:00.
Do you think you might be open longer?
At the moment, I don't think so. Maybe we would be just in the restaurant baking stuff, but I don't think we're going to be open as later as that.
The only reason why we say that to our applicants is that if you plan on staying open longer, for whatever reason, you know, your business says, oh, we're doing well, let's expand.
Yeah.
You don't have to come back to us.
Oh, okay.
All right, so-
So, yeah, so we would like to keep it open until 10:00, just in case if we do better, we can stay long, open longer.
That's fine. So, I'm going to make it 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is that okay?
Yes, that's okay.
Anyone else from the board? Yes, Mr. Madden?
Your plans do show two tables with seats?
Yes. We're just going to have the tables, we left them in the drawing, so we don't have to come back. But at the moment, at this moment, we don't have any tables in the restaurant at the moment. That was an advice from Ms. Tu.
Their capacity will be determined by the Building Department and Fire Department.
Right.
Any other board members have any questions?
What will your name be for your business?
So, the name would be Nana's Colombian Bakery, yeah.
Any issues with the Fire Department?
No issues. They have a full cook, food, and fire alarm, all that stuff.
And Building Department?
No problem.
And just so our board knows, there is on-street parking and also parking available on the site, so we vetted that out. They're okay.
So, are we considering this application with eating inside or without eating inside?
Don't know. We were, I was simply considering it as a bakery, In-N-Out, and that's it.
Yeah, so- Right.
Do you plan on cooking right off, right from the bat?
So, it's just filling, like for the empanadas and stuff like that? So, it's not really like we're cooking any meals, it's just like filling stuff, yeah.
Does that answer your question, or?
No.
Okay.
I think we would consider it with the seating, but the seating to be determined by the Building Department and Fire Department.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the board? And go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anybody online?
Not at this time.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Move on to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay. On the resolution for 366 North Street Bakery Eating Establishment, hours of operation to be daily, 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits, follow the permitting process, codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and if applicable, the County of Orange. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant shall supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of granting of this special use permit, such permit shall be null and void. Simply means if you don't start your project in six months, you'll have to send us a letter telling us you wish to extend your approval.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I need a motion. Mr. Madden, I need a second. Mr. Higby, discussion.
The only thing that I would like to add is because there is a kitchen, they have to get the County Health Department approval.
So noted, so added.
Okay.
Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Good luck. See to DPW.
Guys so much.
Next on our agenda is Luis Guaman, Mini Market, 202 to 204 Wickham Avenue. Good evening. Please state your full name for the record.
Good evening. I'm representing my father, Luis Guaman, due to language translation, and, yeah.
So, please tell us your intentions. What's your plan?
My planning in Middletown is to open a mini-market across the city and to bring more customers and their needs so they could improve.
Okay, thank you. All right. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, do we have anyone on the telephone? Anything in writing? We do, and we'll get to that in a moment, yes. And Ms. Hanson, we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay. So, for the public hearing, we did receive an email that I'm going to have to read into the record, that Lynn Gally sent to us. She sent this one first. Dear Board Members, I am writing concerning the proposed convenience store being planned at this location. I live at 15 Sunnyside. My backyard is joining the parking lot behind this dilapidated building, seeking approval for a convenience store. The problem is, this is also a residential neighborhood and is being taken over by businesses, legal and illegal. It is deeply eroding any value of living here. We do not need another convenience store in the area. There are already three in a block radius of this address. There's also five major grocery stores in the vicinity. This is just adding another unneeded service that will probably be open 24 hours. There will be people hanging out and violence after hours. The brightness of the lights in the parking lot already interrupts sleep now, and if more is added, plus cars, people, the quality of life here will hit a new low. Convenience stores, like the previous barber shop that was there, became a hangout for all sorts after hours, and we already have trouble of people hanging out, making problems at the two gas stations one block away. It's time for Middletown to listen to the people who live here and pay taxes. If you want to do anything for the residents, that building should be condemned and removed as it is an eyesore and a beacon for the homeless who sleep in the parking lot behind it. I vehemently oppose the business that will be open no longer than business hours, Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00, as anything else will destroy any remaining value of peace, quiet of this area. Respectfully, Lynn Gally, taxpayer, resident, 15 Sunnyside Avenue. Ms. Gally then also sent a backup email. Dear Board Members, in addition to my previous objections, let me also state that these convenience stores, quote-unquote, "are convenient locations for people to hang out in the parking lots, watching the school children walk by." With the number of children gone, missing in the country and area, I feel less places where cars can sit and idle and people can linger in an area within a block of a park and school is irresponsible. Sincerely, Lynn Gally, resident, taxpayer, 15 Sunnyside Avenue, Middletown, New York. So, they've been read into the record.
And just for the record, this is an approved location. It's within the zone that it can run and businesses, you know, you're allowed to open as many businesses as you want. It's competition.
So, that's the public hearing. We're going to move on to the board members for questions, comments, and concerns.
What are your hours of operation? It doesn't say in the application.
Our hours of operation will be from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
That daily, Monday through, Monday through Sunday?
Yeah, Monday through Sunday.
Okay, no, thank, thank you.
Any issues with the Fire Department?
I just had a, I just had a couple of questions. Is there going to be any cooking?
No, there will not be any cooking.
No cooking? And how about tables and chairs or anything like that?
No, there will be no tables and chairs.
Strictly a convenience store, walk-in, purchase, and leave?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Welch, any issues with the Building Department? Applicant understands that.
Excuse me, can you repeat one more time? Yes.
And the landlord has sent us notification that he has access to the rear parking lot, so he has adequate parking.
Would we normally have the applicant address any of the, or comment on any of the things in the letter, or could we ask him to?
It's a permitted use.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's in the proper zone, proper use.
I just thought maybe he had some, you know, ways that he was going to-
You can ask the applicant.
Is the lighting that bad, that it's so bright that it's bothering the neighbors? And we've had complaints in the past? I mean, he, this isn't his concern, it's more the landlord's concern.
We have received no notifications of such. I mean, DPW is right here, Fire Department's here. They have no record of that.
Gotcha.
I don't know if they've complained to the police department, I don't know. We have, we have no record of it.
My other question is, are you going to be serving alcohol?
No, no alcohol, we're just-
It's strictly a convenience store, In-N-Out. We could ask those questions, Mr. Higby. I'm not sure he would even know the answers because he didn't have the letters in front of him.
I just didn't know if you had anything that you wanted to comment, listening to the letter of the neighbors. Is there anything that you, you know, plan on doing to prohibit cars from parking and, you know, blah, 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 you know?
Yeah, I appreciate the email, and I would like to add on that we also have onsite parking, so that may affect, but we will try strictly, because we're a family business and it's basically us three working, so we will try as much as possible to not add any danger, any, any missed drugs or anything that will affect the community most importantly.
Mr. Higby, they're also only open 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, I mean, it's not what she requested, 9:00 to 5:00, but I don't know who could stay alive. I mean, it's a convenience store.
No, I think that's reasonable.
So, within reasonable, it's, no, not 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, so. All right, I'm going to go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to address this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and go to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. Okay, moving on. On the resolution for 202 to 204 Wickham Avenue Mini Market, hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. Will be no cooking on premise, no seating on premise, strictly a convenience store. Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown, and the State of New York, and the County when applicable. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City of Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is all commenced, is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Basically, if you don't start your project and get things going within six months, please send us a letter telling us you need to extend your approval.
All right.
Okay, that's all that means. All right. All right, on the motion, I need a motion. Ms. Witt, second, Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. See to DPW for your permits.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Next on the agenda, Maria C. Chavez-Emanez Beauty Salon, 248 to 250 North Street. Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Maria Chavez-Emanez. This is Ms. Maria. I am, due to the language barrier, just going to be translating for her.
That's fine.
Okay.
Please state your name again.
Her name is Maria Chavez.
And your name?
My name is Sandra Arnez.
Thank you.
Okay. She currently has a beauty salon that's named Maria's Beauty Salon LLC, and that is currently at 13 Center Street next to the DMV. The building has sold, to my knowledge, and she has, the landlord will not be renewing her lease, so she's asking to be transferred to 248 to 250 North Street. Her current hair salon has been open and in business for five years, and she would like to move her salon to this new location.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to open the public, open the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Tu, anyone on the telephone? Any written responses? Ms. Hanson, anyone online?
Not at this time.
Well, then we'll go to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. Just so the board knows, there's on-street parking here on North Street, so she has some parking. I don't have hours of operation, though. Do you have, could you tell us what your plan is?
I do. The hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Sorry, Mr. Krogan.
Any issues from the Fire Department?
No issues.
Building Department?
Okay. I'll go back to the public hearing. Anyone present wishing to speak on this application, please step forward. Ms. Hanson, has anyone come online?
Not at this time.
I'm going to close the public hearing, move on to the board one more time for any questions, comments, or concerns. None being had. On the resolution for Maria C. Chavez-Emanez Beauty Salon, 248 to 250 North Street, hours of operation to be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Of course, you'll need all necessary licenses by the State of New York. They must be posted. Obviously, any of your employees who are doing that work also must have, be licensed by the State of New York. Okay? Subject to the City of Middletown DPW and the City of Middletown Fire Department inspections, approvals, and when necessary, approval of the Commissioner of Public Works. The applicant will obtain all necessary permits and follow the permitting process, codes and ordinances of the City of Middletown, the State of New York, and if applicable, the State, the County of Orange. In addition, if throughout any of the review process, the project is deemed to require bulk requirement tables, the applicant will supply said tables through an architect or engineer licensed in the State of New York. Whereas pursuant to the City Code, Middletown Code, Chapter 475, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement, Section 475-53, Paragraph E, Subparagraph 6, unless work is commenced and diligently prosecuted within six months and completed within two years of the date of the granting of the special use permit, such special use permit shall be null and void. Just explain that if she doesn't start up or can't get going within a six-month period, she needs to send a letter to us extending her approval.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Motion. Ms. Witt, second, Mr. Britto, discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Britto?
Yes.
Ms. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Higby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. See to DPW. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'll make another call for 33 Mulberry Street before we get into Orange Terrace. I don't know. Hopefully, he was aware he had to be here tonight. Okay. We've got one more to go. All right, next on the agenda is Orange Terrace Properties LLC, and this is a, well, originally a six-lot subdivision, which is now a four-lot subdivision. This is for recommendation to the common council only. And just so the board knows, and the public, that this is, been going on for a couple months at least. The applicant originally wanted six lots, which were not-
Conforming.
Not conforming, and basically, the board did not agree. So, we moved it on to the DPW and the Commissioner of Public Works to work out the proper coded and proper boundaries for the City of Middletown requirements. What has been, come up with is four lots, each with a 75-foot frontage or larger, and there's one non-conforming lot, which is 50-foot by, and I don't know the, but it's well over the 7, 7,500 square foot.
Which would be a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Correct. So, the only thing this board does is make recommendations to the common council. The common council has to review and approve or deny the subdivision. All right? I see you're ready to go, sir. I open the public hearing. Please state your name for the record.
Ernest Johnson, Fusco Engineering, representing Orange Terrace.
Okay, sir.
Basically, you've gone over it. We started out with a six-lot subdivision. We've cut it down to four lots, three of them being 75 feet wide, the other one being a 50-foot, as you said, non-conforming, pre-existing lot.
Correct. All right, thank you, sir. I see there's some from the public, some who probably want to make comments.
Are you opening the public hearing at this point?
I did. That's why I let Mr. Johnson speak. Yes, I opened the public hearing.
So, members of the public, if you want to come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Pete Broker. I live on Orange Terrace. Lived there best part of my life. Built a couple of homes there. Had to subdivide, bought property, you know, 50-foot lots. But back in 1975, I was told by Mr. Fusco and Mr. Bradford, the building inspector, the rule is you have to subdivide, and every lot has to be at least 75 feet wide. I followed that law and eventually built a couple of homes there. Now, this, I see everyone has a map. I would like to point out a couple of things that really don't jive too well. If you look at that turnaround that's proposed, it is very small. Your sanitation vehicle right now measures 36 feet. Your snowplow is probably somewhat larger. Now, this proposed turnaround is only 37- Now, this proposed turnaround is only 37 feet. I mean, you know, even if you nose your truck into one direction and try to back up, you're gonna be stuck. So that's one of the concerns that I have. The other concern is if this, if this turnaround doesn't work, or if you can't do it, you're gonna wind up backing the vehicle up for seven football fields. Can you imagine driving a sanitation truck, or a snowplow, or a fire truck? Seven foot, or seven football fields long before you can turn around? In addition to that, the road somehow got narrowed to 25 feet instead of 30 feet. That's an accident waiting to happen. You know? I mean, there's a lot of kids running around there, and a lot of this stuff is happening at night. Garage disposal, you know, it's mostly nighttime stuff. It's gonna create a dangerous situation, to say the least. Now, the other issue is this 150-foot lot. Now, it's my understanding that that 50-foot lot is gonna have to be sold in order for a house to be built on that piece of property, because you can't have the same owner build on that 50-foot lot. It's just another way to circumvent the law.
We agree.
Makes no sense. It's a no-brainer to me.
I just want to just remind you that we're not approving this.
I understand, but I want you to be fully aware of what...
That's fine. The recommendation, we were worried about the many lots that were going to go there, so we made sure that they were properly divided, and then we, your comments are good. Your comments will be passed on to the common council, because they're the ones who will have to approve. Yes, absolutely.
All right. I guess the next thing would be if they decide to pass this, this plan here, you need to think ahead a little bit. There's Clinton Street, where there is a potential of at least 10, 12 houses being built on 50-foot lots. Now, if you do it for this guy, you're gonna have a hard time saying we're not gonna do it for the other guy.
That must not be a subdivision.
You know, we all had to subdivide. We all had to subdivide, and there's at least, probably at least four times, four different homes have been subdivided in that area. And actually, right now, as we speak, there are two homes being built right close by on State Street. They're being built on 75-foot lots. Those lots were subdivided last year. That's it for me. I'll let somebody else speak.
Okay, thank you.
I would also recommend you put your writing, comments in writing, and you can also refer them to the common council as well.
Okay. I will do that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name, my name is Louis Villafane, and I'm Pete's neighbor, and I've been there for 30 years. And when they built my home, my home was one of the ones that Jack Stack wanted to build two homes at that location, and it was through Pete that came to complain to make sure that they followed the law of the 50-foot pre-existing lots. And so I'm here to support him, and I'm totally against this 50-foot lot. And when Pete says there are, when I was there, there was only two kids when I moved in. Now, there's over about 15 kids playing in that street, and there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and that would be one of my concerns, too. Okay? So I'm just here to support Pete and voice my view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria Jetchamlong, and I live at 2-4 Clinton Street. And even though Clinton Street is not being developed just yet, but I was one of the ones that had to be forced back in 2003 to combine my lots to comply with the 75-foot square footage. But I'm in agreeance with all of them, but my concern here is that now all these new homes are being built, and I have, I live below street level, and I have a tank that pushes all my septic up to street level to go into the sewer system. I'm assuming that's how it goes. What's gonna happen now with all these other homes being built and making sure that I don't get their residues coming back into my tank? How is that gonna be? Is there anything that's gonna be done to fix that, to prevent that from happening? Because I really don't want no backwash in my house. So that's just one of my concerns there, because that tank, sometimes it goes and I have to replace it. And I've been there 19 years, so I don't know if there's gonna be literally more, you know what I'm talking about. I don't want that in my house, because you're gonna have all these other homes coming now, and thankfully, I've never had any issues, but there's, there needs to be something that, to prevent that from happening, because I will not be happy. But with them, too, again, I don't think the 50-foot lot should be built, or whatever it is that is gonna happen with that, because I had to be forced to be built on two of my 50-foot lots and combine it into the 175. I have other issues with that, but I can't move my house around right now, so that's it.
Thank you.
I noticed the way it was divided. I don't understand, how come they cannot equally divide and put three houses on that location? Because I'm not against having houses at that location, I just want to make sure they follow the law. But why can't they not equally divide those lots into three houses, instead of that, leave that 150-footer there?
Mr. Johnson, can you answer that? Were you at the meeting with the Commissioner of Public Works?
That's what the commissioner said we could do, because that one lot, that's 50 and non-conforming, won't be owned by Orange Terrace. It'll be owned by a different person in there, so that one's allowed to be a 50-foot lot.
Okay.
So we're only gonna do the 375-foot lots, the non-conforming, won't be owned by Orange Terrace.
And is that reflected on your maps?
I believe so.
And if it's not, can you make sure it's on there?
Make sure we'll make that change, yes.
Okay, yeah, because we had several iterations of the plan.
And I believe there should be a note that no two adjoining lots should be under the same ownership.
Okay.
And Mr. Krogan did suggest that you put your concerns in writing and make sure they get to the common council, because that'll be very, very helpful.
Can I have one question?
Absolutely.
On the part that you just brought up, with no two adjoining lots being the same, that is not the same part that we went over with the commissioner. He says it was just the one, the 50-foot one couldn't be owned by the same people on either side of it.
It would be after the sale that they can't be under the same ownership.
Okay.
All right.
One more thing.
Sure.
So, even if somebody else owns this property, and you sell this 50-foot lot, based on your zoning rules, it says it has to be the 75-square foot for, for the allowable lot. It's 50 by 100 and...
90 is 12,000 square feet.
It's 9,500 square feet. It says here, unless, 75 feet, except where the allowable lot area is less than 75 square feet, then the minimum, minimum shall be 50 feet for a valid pre-existing lot. Now, when you do the math, it comes out to 9,500 square feet. So even if you sell it, you still can't build it, because it doesn't conform with the rule that it says here.
Well, it would be a pre-existing non-conforming. If they had to go to get any variances, they'd have to go to the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals.
No, I get that. See, this just brings up all types of feelings right now, because I got screwed when I built my house in 2003, because I was told that I had to combine mine two lots. And I wanted to originally put my house on one lot, so I can have a nice big yard, but I was told I couldn't. And I owned two 50-foot lots. And now, all of a sudden, now you can build on a 50-foot lot. It was pre-existing.
We understand your concerns, and they're duly noted. This was a project that the engineer and our Department of Public Works, Jacob Toewill, worked on to come up to a resolution. It's not approved. All we're doing is recommending it, if the board decides, to the common council. From the common council, again, they would have a public hearing and approve it or disapprove it from there. The public would be welcome for their comments. As previously indicated, I do suggest that you write down your comments and submit those to the common council as well.
Okay.
Before we move on, Ms. Hanson, is there anyone online?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any issues from the Fire Department?
He has issues.
Back in December-January timeframe, there were some revisions done to the plans to add a hammerhead turnaround at the end for Fire Department access and DPW. That's not on this set of plans.
It's on this, on the latest set that I have, yes.
I don't have that on this set of plans here. I have a small turnaround.
That is possible. We have, like I said, we had several iterations.
Right.
And not sure if we got the most up-to-date one.
Mr. Johnson, what date are the plans that you're looking at dated?
Dated 9/26 revision date.
Mr. Atkins, what date do you have?
I have 7... Okay, this is, this is pre, pre the 4, right? So, that's not... I gave them, I gave them the mentions of our trucks and our turning radius.
Okay.
Because originally, I wanted a complete turnaround, but I understand, so we have to have a hammerhead turnaround back there.
All right, so we'll bring it over through here, like you said, and use those numbers.
Yeah.
This the one we were looking at earlier?
Yeah, that's not the...
Yeah. This is the latest and the greatest, 9/26.
Yeah, that's not what, that's not the revision that I have.
Okay.
It's essentially 80-foot by 44 by 55. Let me just write that down, so I remember. I was dealing with Jessica.
Jen.
Jennifer. Jen, okay.
Mr. Atkins, did you submit your comments to the engineer?
Yes, this was back in January, when I got these revisions, and I requested to have a turnaround put in, and we settled on a hammerhead turnaround, and they made the revisions, and it came to me, and that's fine, you know, that works for us, you know, with our ladder truck being the biggest thing that would need to get turned around up there. So this, this latest iteration does not have that room. We've got it.
So maybe, Mr. Johnson, if you can submit your changes to Mr. Atkins, so he can approve them?
Yeah, we'll have them done in a day, so that doesn't take very long.
Is there any other comment?
Nothing at this time from me.
Thank you.
Anyone else present wishing to step forward and address the application?
Clarify.
Come to the mic, please, sir. Speak into the mic, please, sir.
Is this turnaround now settled, or do we have to follow up on that?
He has to redraw it. He has to draw it as per the Middletown Fire Department's request.
Okay, so we're done with the turnaround, that's solved? Right? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Ms. Hanson, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time.
Ms. Two, we didn't receive anything in writing, did we? Okay.
Just to let everybody know, on that part of Orange Terrace, there isn't, not one house that's 50-foot. All those houses are 75 or larger. All right?
Understood.
Mr. Johnson, any last words?
Thank you.
Okay. Go to the board for any questions.
I could be reading this wrong. There's two 75-foot lots, a 50-foot lot, and an 89-foot lot. Am I missing something?
Is that right?
Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And if we, I mean, it's not our approval, we're just sending it to common council, but if they approve...
That's correct. Referring it to them.
Just for your information, Mr. Britto, the history of this was that when we first saw this, it was not right. So it's been going back and forth for a while, trying to get it to come or conform, at least in some way, shape, or form. Okay? It was originally six lots. So we finally had the engineer sit with the DPW and the Commissioner of Public Works to work out a reasonable subdivision.
Wouldn't it be that there would be, each lot would be at least 75 feet?
There, there was the issue of pre-existing non-conforming.
Right. That's the only kicker to the whole thing.
So why wouldn't you make the one, like, why wouldn't you make the 270, or 375, and then the other one 60, whatever, 4, or whatever it is?
Because then it wouldn't be a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It would just be a non-conforming lot.
It would be a lot line change at that point.
Which they can't do?
No.
Except the, except the guy building the road.
So it's three properties that are gonna be owned by Orange Terrace, right? Which three are...
Until they sell.
Which three are gonna be owned by Orange Terrace?
The conforming lots.
The conforming lots, the non-conforming, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
The public hearing is still open.
Yes.
When we discuss a subdivision, that doesn't include lot line changes?
Well, it would become a two-lot subdivision if you're moving lot lines. They're trying to keep the non-conforming lot within its original position. And then the other ones, they have to move to make it the subdivision, so that they have the 75-foot frontage. So they had to keep one lot as a pre-existing non-conforming.
On the top of your, on the top of the first page, it shows that Clinton Street is connecting to Orange Terrace, but it doesn't go all the way through, does it?
No.
No? Is there...
It's a paper street.
It's a paper street, okay.
Just like the end of Orange Terrace was.
And that's the other ones that you guys were referring to that... Yeah. Yeah.
The fourth lot down is owned by Allstate Realty. Second lot is owned by Land Group. Next lot is, again, Allstate, and the next lot to that, again, is Land Group. Now, this guy was kind of slick when he bought these properties. He, he's, he's the same owner, but he put these lots on the different LLCs, just to be able to build on that 50-foot lot, or on 50-foot lots. And there's one, two, three, four, five. There's six lots that are involved in this by the same person. So, my point being, if you're going to let this fly on Orange Terrace, what are you going to tell this guy? You're going to have to let him slide, too. Because you let this guy build on Orange Terrace on the 50-foot lot, he's going to tell you, he let, let it happen there. It's just another way to circumvent the law, and it shouldn't, shouldn't happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's, it's, it's quite tangled, because of what we can do as a board.
I was just going to ask you exactly what our role is. Are we voting in favor or not in favor of this?
No.
We're not doing anything.
We're, we're voting to move it on to the common council, so that all those issues can be vetted out.
And if we voted not to go to the common council, does it die?
Yes.
Yeah, it just dies.
Until they, until they bring something else, until they bring another plan to the, into the, forward.
I don't know if they'll do that, but, or, I don't know if we can do that, right? I mean, we cannot recommend it.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to recommend this. I mean, I mean, you can't tell people that they can't do it and tell people that they can, and I, I'm not voting in favor of this.
I mean, we, we can't tell them that. That's the problem. That's the way it's set up.
Well, I'm going to...
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I think at this point, though, the public hearing should be closed.
Well, yeah, I'm waiting to, I'm going to ask if, Veronica, anybody else online one more time? Ms. Hanson, we have any else, anyone else online?
Not at this time.
Okay. So, we're going to close the public hearing and go to the board one more time, but I think the board has kind of got their opinion. And so, on the resolution to move or recommend Orange Terrace Properties LLC to the common council for a, would be a six-lot to a four-lot subdivision, the section 33, block four, lots four, five, six, seven, nine, and 11, in an R1 zone, to be new, for new lots. The motion is, or the resolution is, the recommendation to move forward to the common council. I need a motion. Mr. Britto, I need a second. No second. No vote. Doesn't move forward.
Oh, Mr. Wait, I'll, I'll, I'll second it to go to a vote.
Okay. Second, Mr. Higbee. Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Madden?
No.
Mr. Britto?
No.
Ms. Witt?
No.
Mr. Higbee?
No.
I vote yes. Motion defeated. Well, be in touch. I'm sure you will be.
There's still one more matter on the agenda.
Yes, I have to call again for 33 Mulberry Street. That being said, he's not here. We do, we don't want to adjourn it, we just don't even recognize it, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
We would have to start over.
So be it. No show, 33 Mulberry Street. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Britto, Mr. Higbee, all in favor?
Aye.